We're okay? All right, I will go ahead and call the April Board of Commissioners meeting to in session. First on the idea, first on the agenda if you look is the approval of the minutes from last month. Any comments? Will they be approved? A second, so we'll move Ms. Carnes.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Abstain.
Mr. Musachi?
Aye.
All right, well now move on to our next thing which is the public comments. We've had some guidelines that we put out that are on the website. But again, just to ensure that it's in a dignified, orderly, and efficient fashion. So I will call for anyone who's willing to make a public comment. Do we have anyone?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Vincent Hodge, 622 Raleigh Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. And his topic is HRV. Budget surplus.
Okay. Well, it looks like your back's a little better.
Day by day, sir, and I appreciate you asking.
Well, everything's relative, so it's a little better.
If I can get a solid eight hours through the night, I'll be grateful. Not all of us are spry and 29 like you. So Vincent Hodge, 622 Raleigh Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, 23507, Camp Red State. You're representing New Virginia majority, constituents of the quad, which is the St. Paul's quadrant. Other NRHA properties under purview. So we have been asking City Council for maintenance funding to support the maintenance efforts that the NRHA has been putting together with your own budget in the amount of $5 million. What we're being told through different channels that there might be a surplus of budgeting that we could tap into approximately $1 million through HRV. Now, if Hampton Roads Ventures does have that surplus, I would like to be able to send an email to somebody and like start walking that money down. There are maintenance efforts that the constituents feel that could be brought to fold that would help raise the standard of housing. And we know that with Youngs and Calvert not being abandoned, residents remaining in place, there are other things that can be done to raise that standard up. We know that at some point, those redevelopments are going to happen, the residents will not object to that. But as they remain in place and continue to economically advance, try to stabilize themselves in the board, that money is available. The constituents would like to be able to see it and try to help, not only allocate, but to appropriate it further. Now that we see things happening in their settlements and settles, I would like to start asking the NRHA amongst other interested parties as far as advocating for these tenants. I'd like to ask what's happening with that state law. I really would, and I know I might be talking out of hand, but as I start to build and coalition build and start asking questions in the neighborhoods and of the constituents and developers, you know, there's something that has to be done there because we do see grocery stores that are popping up in between 39th and 41st over the publics. We know the 21st, 25th Street at Hampton Boulevard is getting grocery store legal. We're talking about getting, having access in total, if you include those grocery stores, seven grocery stores. And we definitely know that in Youngs and however, access to fair food, fair, healthy food, $70,000 is not enough. So if we're truly invested, you know, in that way, the wellbeing of this community, I'd like for your help in that. I'm not saying that it's something spearheading, that it's something Mr. Musachi or Mr. Jackson and others. It makes plain sense, surpleting that in some sort of way, taking those monies and coming in. I'd like to be able to start that conversation. So those are the two things I had, and I'll stay up for new business.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the Executive Director's comments.
Good morning, Commissioners and guests. Just have a few things I wanted to go over and add it. Put some bullet points in your package today that sometimes we have a go over. First is the COVID-19 and its impact on the organization. Since we went to the mask optional back in the early part of March, we really haven't had any complaints. People, I assume that just because we haven't heard anything, that people are feeling comfortable being back in the workspace and also being able to provide the service that we need to, and making sure that the residents have access to the resources and things that they need to in order to carry on their business. And really, the staff shortages that we're experiencing are partially related to the pandemic, you know, with the great resignation that has happened. And we have, are finding out that we're just not marketable. We're not having a problem being able to bring on administrative staff, but we're having a hard time bringing on maintenance. And Mr. Hodge just touched on that. I know you talked about some of the longer mid-long term needs, but our immediate needs are actually being able to make sure that we have maintenance in place to be able to provide the maintenance services, be able to take care of the units for the residents that are in place now. We're just having a hard time being able to address that. One of the things we did find out is that we really have to look at this holistically. We're sort of looking at it sort of isolated fashion. We actually have to take a look at our whole salary structure, which is really outdated. And one of the things that we're going to do in the next budget years is to have a compensation study. We realize that, you know, we go to these job fairs and we're not even competitive. So it's like, why even go when we can't offer a decent salary, not even talking about a living wage, which we can't do. So in order to make sure that we're consistent, we consistently raise up all salaries, we have to have a compensation study done to see how we fare with the other organizations, similar type organizations within this region. We know just, for example, I think the city manager talked about the whole issue that that happened because they, they're down about 200 positions. And one of the things I think they're talking about is actually applying a 5% increase in salary to all of their, to their current staff. And they also have some incentive that they think that's in order to bring people, new employees on. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. But I'm sure you're all well aware of, we were talking about that, we sent up here some of the budget challenges that we have.
They're right. How about this? Okay, some of the, some of the budget challenges that, can you give me over the mic a little bit? Okay. Some of the, okay, some of the budget challenges that we have. So we have to put that all together, and we're always thinking that we're having the right size. But some of the things we're going to have to do in terms of being able to bring on, to address the staff shortages, as well as be able to retain the staff that we have, we're going to, it's going to have to be to some degree budget neutral. That's how we're looking at it because before this, we were looking at right sizing anyway. But what we're going to have to do is what we do is going to have to be budget neutral. So we don't actually accelerate the condition that we're in now in terms of the time horizon we're looking at, that we have to make some corrective actions. You know, we really have to look at it in terms of where can we, where can we save as well as take those savings and use that to maybe put into being able to retain staff and also to be able to incentivize people to come here to work. So that's, that's what we're looking at to address that. But that will both, you know, that's really important because we really need to make sure that we have the staff on to be able to address the current needs of our residents. We did bring on some contractors, that has helped, but it's not helped to the degree that we really need to. We're still going to try to continue to bring on additional contractors, help, for example, like with unit turnaround. Where our staff that are currently doing that, that actually could start going back to helping residents, or helping address their unit maintenance in our units. So we're still continuing to prioritize and work orders in terms of emergencies. And like I said, that we, we're looking at different strategies in terms of monetary, non-monetary incentives. In terms of the strategic plan, moving to a different area now, we're moving along. I feel really confident that we're going to, we're going to have enough information to be able to present to you where the board can have an honest discussion about where the organization needs to be in the next three to five years. I mean, to me, that's really important, given the fact that, you know, we're talking about limited resources that we have. There are some items that we really need to address. Mr. Hodge just did mention, you know, in terms of the renovation of our units, what we need to do in the future, that's really important. We're talking about, most of our public housing buildings are over 50, 60 years old. I mean, we're not alone in that. I mean, I just read something where I think the Louisville Housing Authority, I mean, there's a number of, it's like weekly, you start seeing housing authorities where they're just, put your hands up because they have so many units with very little money to be able to maintain them, to modernize the units. And I, like I said, I see that probably weekly where these large metropolitan housing authorities are just, they're, because they have so many units with very little funding to be able to address the backlog of maintenance issues. The President put out his budget last week, and you look at the capital fund area, it does not address the backlog of deferred maintenance that housing authorities have to sort of address year in and year out. There's a 75, estimated $75 billion backlog in deferred maintenance. We're only getting $3 billion to address it. Where is the rest of the money going to go? What's going to happen to the, to the public housing units that we currently have that have that backlog and deferred maintenance? Those are some of the things, like during the retreat, that we really have to address. You know, if we continue to envision the usual, or we start thinking about what do we need to do to create, improve the quality of lack of our residents, which starts with some of the, you know, the living situation that they're in, as well as talking about the social services that we need to provide. So it's really coming at a critical time that we have those frank conversations during this strategic planning process. In terms of the actual retreat itself, we're looking at what we decided on Thursday, March 19th, and Friday, I'm sorry, May 19th, and Friday, May 20th. We're tentatively scheduled to have it at the CROX. They have some rooms available. I think Joni's working out all the details. And we're looking at no more than six hours per day, like maybe nine and three, and maybe Friday, and maybe a little shorter. But I think there's going to be a lot of good information that we'll be able to share with you to get some really good feedback from you in terms of our direction. But in terms of having it, the location, we're looking at the CROX Center. But we'll, once we finalize that, we'll let you know. Some of the upcoming events, I noticed a number of things coming up, and I just wanted to go over to make sure that you're all aware, especially within the next week or so. Tomorrow, we're having the, our grand reopening of the Envision Center. If you look in your packet on page 77, it talks about the, some of the events that we're going to have. I think there's something that's going to be going on today that's primarily for the children in the, in the Calvert Square area at the Envision Center. And then tomorrow, we're, we're actually going to be doing a sort of a building tour. I think that there's going to be delegate, state delegate glass is going to be there, the mayor, Alexander, Councilwoman Oyster will be there sometime between 1:00 and 2:00. I plan on being there as well. Like I said, this is sort of the reopening of the center, and there's a lot of anticipation in that the residents will be able to have access to the center. So we're looking forward to that. And there's more information in your, in your packet on page 77, on the flyer. We have the groundbreaking, which is Tuesday, April 19th. I hope you all received an invitation, have you all received an invitation on that? And that's next Tuesday, April 19th, 2:00 PM, 1, start 1:00 to 2:00. And it's at 521 Wood Street where there's going to be a number of speakers. We actually have the Regional Administrator from HUD who has been newly installed in the Mid-Atlantic region. He's actually going to be coming down to be a part of that. He was intending to come down on the 20th Jasper Tour of the United Project, but when he found out about the groundbreaking, he wanted to participate in that instead of doing the tour. So he'll also be joining us, as well as some other dignitaries that will be there. So we're all looking forward to that. Lock it on, I hope you at least received the information on that. If you're interested in attending, they're having, they're holding it in, I think it's going to be in Norfolk, but on Wednesday, they're having their fundraising golf tournament at the Top Golf in Virginia Beach. Actual conference starts Thursday and Friday at the Sheraton Norfolk, Riverside Hotel. And then the final thing that's coming up is Virginia Housing, or formerly known as VHDA. They're actually starting to have these regional, the regional board meetings. And what is it, and they're, it's on, I think it's April 25th, they're actually having a regional board meeting in Hampton Roads area. And I was asked a particular panel, in that board meeting, that's going to be in Virginia Beach, it's April 25th, 1:00 to 3:30. And they just wanted to find out from some of the housing folks within the area about the future of affordable housing in Hampton Roads, some of the challenges our locality faces in terms of advancing affordable housing in our areas, and what is our organization doing, and how can Virginia Housing help? And being able to address some of those challenges with affordable housing.
When is that going to be run, 1:00 to 3:30?
Monday, April 25th, 1:00 to 3:30 at the Delta Hotel in Virginia Beach.
Delta?
Delta, not familiar with that. But like I said, they invited me to be a part of a panel, I think Bruce is going to be on the panel. So they're going to have a combination of, you know, housing folk, public and private sector, housing folk that will be, you know.
Do we need, do I need to register if I want to attend that, or?
I don't think, I didn't, I think you can just attend. Yeah. And that's all I have. All right, any questions for the Executive Director? All right, we'll move on then to Commissioner's comments. Just to let you know, for the, we are going to be going back into the communities with the Housing and Safety Committee. So we'll be out, excuse me, young terrorists for that meeting. So I think that's great that we're getting back out into the community.
And one of the things I'd like for us to think about during the summer is actually having board meetings, maybe out of some of the senior community. I think that that's something we probably could start thinking about. So if that's okay, I wanted to maybe start to think, especially during the summer.
Okay, great. Okay. Yes?
I was embarrassed to realize that I was unable to participate in the last board meeting because of a policy that I voted on that precluded us from utilizing the virtual position so many times. And I, I guess I put that back on the table. You know, we lived in a changing world. And while I think that there is value in attending, you know, for me to be able to not participate was really kind of disconcerting, and it almost caused a structural problem with the forum. Is that, do we want to revisit that policy?
We can't, sir, that's the state law.
Okay. Got it.
Yes, sir, just Commissioner's comment, Ron talking about maintenance staff, and this tremendous problem with hand trade workers, people. And I would urge him to look at the cost benefit of rolling that all, the contract work, if it makes sense, for the right sizing.
Yeah, that's part of the right sizing. We are, we've already started looking at that with the grounds, and we need to, I mean, the whole, that whole area. Because it, you know, was brought out in the tag report that we needed to do that analysis, and we are doing that.
The secondary thought, maybe the primary thought is, it offers opportunity for entrepreneurial development of our clients.
Yes, that's true.
You know, there are folks out there who have talents.
Yeah.
And if they can put together the right, right organization, they can find themselves being helpful to us and helping to.
Because we do have, I think, some contracts, we have with like Section 3 low income folks in the city that, they do actually contract work for. So that would be sort of the next step would be that actually if they're employees, if that, you know, if there is an area that's impacted to that degree where we couldn't keep them on, I mean, that would be, that would be an option for them too. But also for the residents, it would be an opportunity for them, especially where there's not really a lot of capital outlay. I think like that's, that's sort of the need to be able to start that. Yeah.
Yeah. With the right seminars and everything, you can get grease, tracks, bad. I just think there's an opportunity there, constantly being our, having to deal with fewer and fewer nickels coming from the question.
And those are the, and that's, that's really important part is being able to put our residents in a position to be able to take advantage of those opportunities. So that, to me, that's really important. If you're not really, they're not really prepared to do it, then it's an opportunity that they can't really capitalize on. But if we're making sure that, you know, we're working with these, you know, like TCC or some of these other entities that provide training and things like that. I mean, there's, there's plenty of opportunities if they have, you know, make sure they get through high school, making sure that they have access to the training. You know, not, they don't always have to be college, but the lawyers, they're looking for people with, with just certifications now. The shipyard, they're always looking for people with not four-year degrees, but they need, they need qualified people now. So we need to be sort of tapped in to that to make sure our residents are in those pipelines to be able to get that training. And then when the opportunities are available, that they have the requisite skills to be able to take those opportunities.
Usually it's the paperwork skills that they're, that folks are lacking, but.
Yeah.
The management, you know, how to estimate a job, how to, how to fill a job, how to, all that.
Yeah.
They've got the hand skills.
Yeah. And even just, you know, the, I mean, I, this just, it goes for, you know, just speaking, and I guess it's a sort of indictment on school in general where I talked to someone from the shipyard, and they said, just being able to write. And just being able to write is something that, you know, that, that they're really lacking. So in some cases, it's really hard for people to bear right, and, and, you know, they can pass maybe the equivalency. But in some cases, it needs to be leaving a little bit of that to be able to, be able to read, comprehend if they're looking at plans and things like that. So there's a number of things to address, but I think that at least we can be tapped in to be able to help facilitate residents who really want to save their lives and access those occupations.
Other comments? All right, and let's move on to page 11 in your packet, and then we'll be starting on some resolutions.
Yes, sir, so your board members, this is an item that you've seen several times in your board packet over the past two months. The two items are connected to each other. So these are items one and two under Roman numeral three, Development. Last month, we did not have a forum, so we did hold the public hearing, but we could not have the vote on those resolutions. So today's the vote on those resolutions. We do have on the line representatives from bond council and from the developers, just as we have had them on the line for previous board meetings. Nothing has changed. The resolutions are the same as the resolutions you previously saw. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or as I said, we have bond counsel on the line who is also available. And if we don't have any questions, we'll move on with the vote.
Questions? No? Let's move ahead.
So we'll take these items one at a time. The first one is the revenue bond for Lexington Park Apartments, and I would like the motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Musachi?
Aye.
Kimi Hendrix. Here's Ms. Rose. Are we channeling Kimi Hendrix?
We're going to give a minute to Ms. Arrington.
Okay.
Okay.
You must have security. I have security.
All right, thank you, thank you.
All of the nation. NRH, US.
Good morning, Ms. Arrington.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rose.
Well, thank you for holding us a meeting for me. Okay, I'm ready. I'm ready to go.
Ms. Arrington, we're at development item, Roman numeral three, number two, and this is the bond issuance. So the second bond issuance that I was mentioning is with regard to Braywood Manor Apartments, the revenue bond. And I will entertain a motion.
So my turn first, I'll make it.
We have a motion, Mr. Musachi, and a second from Mr. Gresham, and I will call the roll. Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington and Mr. Musachi.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, the next would be community engagement. Now I'll ask Ms. Thomas to come in.
Good morning.
We have item three hundred, Development.
Braywood.
Oh, that's Steve.
Steve?
Never mind.
We all want to get you. It wasn't for driving.
I hope you require me to read the, sorry, Steve. No problem. So back in February, I came to the, to the board, and I don't know, we brought the foreword, we're looking to a Section 18 disposition for Broad Creek. So that's for the Marshall Manners 2, 3, and 2, 3, and 4, and Golden Greens 2, 3, and 4. The purpose of this is to allow us to move forward with a renovation of those communities using low income housing tax credits. In your packet, we provided from the discussion last time, the draft relocation plan. And the idea is that residents aren't being displaced through this measure. They will be temporarily moved out of their, their units on a, on a building by building basis as the renovation goes through the different phases. But the first step of this is for us, in order to move forward with that project, which will be a disposition to allow us to move forward with low income housing tax credits and a conversion of the property from the Section 9 program, public housing, to the project based Section 8 program, where the, again, income qualifications, income rules, and the rental assistance will essentially remain the same for the residents. That this action before you is to permit us to submit for the Section 18 disposition. We had a resolution in your packet, and again, upon board's approval, we will put together the full application package to submit to HUD later in April.
And that starts on page 23 of your packet.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So we, we vetted this thing multiple times. And we've had some history at some other projects that have been real troubling that have had a really deleterious effect on the organization. How are we with design documents on this and architectural specs? And this is an issue close to Dick Gresham's heart. Can you speak to that? Because this is really.
Yes. So in, in particularly also in the current climate, where cost has certainly been escalated as part of construction projects. So there are a lot of concerns. They have a, a, I think it's a, in previously, they had a, the InteInclaves was the, the.
General.
General. They've actually pulled out. There were some of the requirements that we've had as part of typical federal projects that they weren't prepared to be forward with. So now for tax code, it's the, it's the contractor that they're looking to go with. We still have Rentanour Baines as the contracted architect. And they are continuing to go through and produce the 100% drawings. I think right now they're only at about 60%. And so to your point, it is going to be a constant managing of the budget as we go forth with the tax credit application. This action here allows us to submit for the HUD approval so that we can move forward to the next step. It still does not say, or that, that final decision, once everything is in, about the financials of whether or not we can pull off the project. So based on the work that we have with the board subcommittee, there are a lot of, you know, essentially, I would say, steps on the financial side of it to ensure that it is okay. One of the biggest changes, though, in this project, as opposed to digs, as opposed to grainy, is NRHA is not the primary person doing the work.
Right.
So TCB, who are, will be the developer, and they are taking the overwhelming line share of developer fee because they are taking the overwhelming share.
Seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five percent. Correct. So part of the way that we are, we're reducing the risk is by having the developer in that position.
Good answer. Yeah, just always be clear what the contractor has, this is responsibility. What the architect designer has is their responsibility. What the developer and what, what government does. You know, last time I think it was the housing of Richmond, Virginia Housing sort of caused us with further requirements. Broke us into a category.
Yeah, that's all. I think that is, that is a big thing. There's the NRHA administration, certainly our financial folks. We are all keeping a close eye on the cost of the project. We know from the other projects that we're working with Detroit Neighborhoods Program, that costs are shooting up about 20% is what we're seeing as our, our cost escalations on our, our construction project.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Another question? And we need a vote on this?
Yes, we decide they have a motion. This is Roman numeral three, item three.
So who?
A second, please.
Second.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Musachi?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
And again, sorry about this.
I know you all just wanted to see Kim.
How about that? Kim, yes, thank you.
I'm back. Oh, good morning, commissioners. I wanted to come to you today with the final leg of our annual process. So today I've come to you offering a resolution for approval for the FY '23 annual and five-year plan. We began this process in January of this year, meeting with the resident advisory board, assembling them as a group to hear the initiative, the updates, and the changes that have been proposed by staff and dictated by some state local law as it pertains to the way that we operate a new business here in our, in our HA. Through this process, the resident advisory board has heard from the subject matter experts here in the agency to learn how these changes and updates would affect the business at large and also to provide an aspirational view of what the next five years of operations could potentially look like. During this process, the RAB board had the opportunity to ask questions. We brought a couple of folks back for some clarification to make sure that the, the information that was presented was fully understood and allowed that RAB board to provide a recommendation on the policy. We did comply with federal, federal rules under HUD to allow for a public commentary, which was between February 1st, 2022 through March 18th, 2022. And we did convene our public hearing last month, March 10th, 2022, as part of our regular board of commissioners meeting. Now that we have filled the terms and the obligations of this process, I am bringing to you the resolution for approval for this document. The document and its final draft was submitted to the board of commissioners by email and updated on our agency's website on April 7th for final review ahead of this vote today. Just a few things to tease out in this document. While we did have community comments as part of the public hearing process, there were very little that actually addressed the annual plan itself. But those comments and our responses are included as part of the packet. Other comments that were included that, that were very specific in nature, like maintenance issues, issues in specific households, were not included in this year's process in the comment period. As HUD dictates, we need only address those comments that relate to the policy. But those comments were followed up on by the appropriate staff members. Also, you will see on the capital fund budget area of this plan, there was a note, a footnote that basically denotes that the capital fund plan will be coming to the board of commissioners in June, this June, for a final review. While we did include the capital fund process as part of the resident advisory board and we have presented the five-year projection for that plan, it still must go, undergo its own 45-day review period by the public. So we anticipate that Clayton Odom will bring that for resolution in June of this year after that 45-day period has been successfully gone through. So with those things being notated, I will pause for any questions and again recommend that the plan is approved.
Questions and comments for Ms. Thomas? And again, thank you for herding all of that together during the pandemic, in person, not in person, back and forth. It, it was a challenge, but I really appreciate the effort you put into it.
Thank you.
So I will make the motion and we approve it?
I will accept that vote.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Musachi?
Aye.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Kim. Really, again, having participated that years in the past, it's not just, let's have a meeting and talk about it. I really do appreciate you staying on it during, during the pandemic and all of the things that have been turned on the page. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we can now look at the page 49, all of the financial administrative activities. Give you a second to look at that.
Now, there's one I forgot to mention in my conference.
Okay. While, while people are contemplating this.
Okay. It's one of the things that we're doing as part of the strategic, our strategic planning process is where public perception is really important in terms of the organization. So one of the things we're doing is actually we're surveying. Giving a survey for, to our residents, to our employees, community partners, and political leaders. It's sort of in the light of a, like a SWOT analysis, great witnesses, opportunities, and threats. I think that's really important as we go forward. It could be an asset if it's, if it's good, or it could be something that are really a challenge for us going forward, where we try to, you know, try to marshal community support for any things that we'd like to do in the future. So I think it's really important for us to sort of, hey, what do people view us as right now? So what things do we need to do to address that? You hear about organizations going through a rebranding process and it's sort of ironic that I think one of the, you know, you heard about Governor Youngkin signing all these bills, like 700 bills. And there were four bills that particularly contain the housing authorities. And one of them is gives the housing authority through their, I guess, working through their local elected officials in order to not necessarily be named by the locality. They could actually come up with a, with a name, a different name than, say, the Norfolk Housing Authority. It could be called something else. For example, like Charlotte Housing Authority, I know this is North Carolina. It's called Oblivion. It's supposed to be something about the gift, giving the gift of life. But that's what they changed their name to. In some other states, they changed their name, Housing Forward. So, so it gives you the opportunity to, you know, change your name or rebrand your, you know, rebrand your organization. Not to say that we're there, but it's really important that we at least see how we're perceived. So I don't think it'll necessarily be a name change, but we just need to be mindful of how we're perceived and go forward with some of the initiatives that we really need public support, resident support, our community partners, and political leaders. So that, so you may be hearing about the surveys that are going out to folks before the next board.
If that's packaged up with some steak, that's really good sizzle. But if it's just sizzle.
Oh, yeah, I think it's gonna, I mean, we're looking for honest feedback.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and strategic implementation. And to launch it with a brand name change would be very appropriate. Meta, we call ourselves Meta. Meta. For the name change. Sorry. Okay, then. If there's any, any questions on the financials, contract activities, cash advance, any of that? Okay? Let's go ahead then and take a look at the community, I mean, committee meeting notes. Any questions or comments on those? Again, appreciate you putting them in for the other government to see all of the committees. And then the committee updates, any comments on those? Quite extensive, but I think it's very good to have all that in there. All right. The next thing is any new business? What is your new business?
I have new business in addressing the rebranding that Mr. Jackson just mentioned, sir. I'd also like to read, to bring our attention to St. Paul's Guiding Principles, if I may please and thank you.
Those would typically come in as public comment. Our new business is usually new business for us, not a comment about things.
But. I'm happy to send an email, but I can be brief, about 60 seconds.
That, that, again, we're sort of working through all of this. And so again, yeah, go ahead now, but again, in the future for the public comment. Sure.
And I'll go, I'll go from place then. Okay, as far as the rebranding is concerned, respectfully, that sounds, as a constituent advocate, it sounds very deceitful.
That's, I mean, I didn't, I didn't intend to, I'm sorry, it's not a rebranding. It's just to correct you, it's just, the important thing is the feedback. It's not the rebrand.
The steak, as, as, you know, as the gentleman mentioned, right? The steak, right? This is the thing, everybody loves an underdog, and there's a mess out there. You've addressed it during many meetings, right? And I don't mean to disrespect, I promise I'll keep my comments short. Everybody loves somebody that'll come in and clean up their mess and fix what's wrong. When you addressed that a couple of meetings ago, sir, the public perception was bad and that we need to address and admonish. It's the same thing that's said in Planned Parenthood and other organizations in the community. Please don't think about that rebranding as deceitful. And that's how it will be perceived in the streets. Thank you.
All right.
And I will make that mistake again, thank you.
No, no, it's not a mistake. It just was, we're, we're, we're working our way through this for the first time.
Yes, sir.
For a lot of things.
So again, thank you.
Then we will then go into our closed session. And I'll ask Ms. Corn to read all of that.
Yes, sir. Resolution convening a closed meeting on April 14th, 2022. Be it resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, the act, to discuss the following matter, which is specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. Consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation and legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A7 of the act. May I have a motion, please?
So who?
Ms. Arrington, thank you. Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Musachi?
Aye.
And typically, we will take about five to 10 minutes to make sure everything's set. Again, reminding everyone not to discuss any business whatsoever during this, that time. All right? Thank you.
Okay.
You okay, residents?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to need a minute, I'm sorry, you kicked me out.
Their clients is from hell.
They really are.
All right, thank you.
Okay, shall I hang up? No, please don't hang up.
But, uh.
Okay. Are you also on the other line? Yes. Oh, then yes, you can hang up, thank you. Bye. Bye. Okay. Resolution certifying a closed meeting on April 14th, 2022. Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712B of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended requires certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, upon motion duly made and seconded, be it resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, number one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. And number two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the authority. May I have a motion, please?
So who?
A second, please?
Second.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Musachi?
Aye.
That concludes the business that we have. Any final comments? All right, then I will call the April meeting of the Board of Commissioners to a close. Thank you so much.